All right, then, everyone here. Yes, okay, great. Yeah, okay. I didn't have it. All right, well, it's five o'clock, so why don't we get started? Welcome, everyone. My name is Bob Henry. I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee and Treasurer of the Association this year. On the phone, we have the President of the Board, Giff Brown. He would like to say a few words to kick off the meeting, and then we will get started. So, Giff, I'm gonna hold the microphone next to the speakerphone, and hopefully, everyone will hear you.
Okay, well, if not, give me a shout. The management team, along with Bob and the Finance Committee, have been working very diligently at over the last several weeks to bring us to a point where this current proposal for the budget is coming forward. The Board also has been involved in discussions a little over a week ago, so the Board members understand what is currently in that proposal. It's now time for the membership to listen to Tim and Bob and what they have to say, and as part of that, to understand what it is they're proposing, ask questions, and make comments as they deem appropriate at the appropriate time. But it really is a business is one where presentation is being made through the membership, and I encourage you to be active. So, other than that, Bob, and Tim, you guys have it.
Okay, thank you, Giff. So, again, I want to welcome everyone for coming. This is another in the series of the Town Hall meetings. Today, we were gonna focus on the budget proposal for the fiscal year 2017, which begins October 1st. If you take one look at the slide up there, you will see that there is a, and I don't wanna speak for Tim, but there's an inverse relationship to the amount of work that went into this with the order of the names on the charts. So, you should read nothing into that at all. So, what you're gonna see today is management's proposal for the budget for next year that is based on meeting members' expectations and the survey, and being consistent with the mission of our club. As Giff said, the budget is still preliminary. It still has a few more steps to go through before it's adopted. So, the idea today is to receive feedback, comments, questions from members before it takes the next step. As with every budget proposal, management, the Board, and the Finance Committee, who have all worked on this tirelessly for the last number of months, especially Tim and Stephanie, they're trying to balance a pay-as-you-go mentality through user fees and pricing versus a member subsidy through club dues. And every year, we try to find out what we think is the best balance between those two to meet the member expectations for what they want out of their amenities. The resulting proposal you're gonna see today is very consistent with other bundled clubs in Southwest Florida, and we compare it to the trend data that we get from our accounting firm, RSM. Interesting fact that I saw out of that, we do, in Stonebridge, a third more food and beverage revenue per member than the average of the other bundled clubs. A third more. That's a lot more. It's amazing how much revenue we do through food and beverage. When you almost think we're in the wrong category, they should put us in with Boker or something. So, and Tim can attest then to, there've been a lot of other clubs then who have come to see us and wonder, and ask what we're doing right, when they see the performance that we have and how much the members enjoy using the facilities. So, how did we get to this point? As Giff mentioned, management has been focusing on this since April. Soon as the quarterly results in March were available, they did a reforecast of this fiscal year, which ends in September, and based on that data, management started building the budget for the next fiscal year starting October. And they literally worked on that from April till now. In June, the Finance Committee went through some of the general assumptions in their committee meeting. We had a committee board workshop, or a budget workshop, at the end of June, and then we talked about the budget again in our July meeting. And then, the Board, in the June meeting, went through the general assumptions, and then they had a budget workshop in mid-July, where they went through, just as the Finance Committee did, each department had gone through their department and what their budget proposal was, and they had a chance to ask a lot of questions and dig into the data. So, that got us to where we are today, presenting what is now the fourth or fifth iteration of the budget to the members. The next step is to get feedback from today. Management, Tim and Stephanie, will then make adjustments as needed, if any are needed. In August, the Finance Committee will meet again and go through any changes in the revised budget, and approve a budget to recommend to the Board later in August. The Board will then meet on August 26th, and they will approve a budget for implementation the next fiscal year, so that the quarterly bills can go out September 1st to reflect October 1st fiscal year. So, that's where we are. That's the next step. So, what we wanna do today is go through the detail of each department, and to do that, Tim will take us through that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Both Mr. Brown and Mr. Henry have done a nice job of covering how we got to this point today, and I'll just add that the, you'll see draft up there, and it truly is a draft in that sense that we've been working on this for some time, but until it's approved at the Board level on August 26th, it is still a draft until that time. We actually, Mr. Henry mentioned, we started the process back in April, and we even started a bit before that, just because of where we were in the current fiscal year and our financial performance. We do the reforecast, so that we ensure that we have the fiscal year, the current fiscal year, even or ahead of budget. So, we actually started that process back in March. So, now, we're into July and August, so we're looking at a full, really, six months that we've been working on this budget from inception to the final approval. The budget this year, we had a great opportunity because of the fact that we didn't have, sorry, I thought I lost my clicker. We didn't have the advantage the last couple of years of having great historical data. And now that we're in the clubhouse for two years, we have great information that we can base our projections on for the coming year. By doing the reforecast and assuming the budget based on actual data this year, plus a good, solid two years of history, we're actually able to tighten up a lot of the different line items within the budget. What that does give us the ability to do is have a much more realistic budget. I think in the past, we've had some years, and we've had some great fluctuation within certain departments. One department may do well, another one picks up the slack, and I think this budget really tightens up each department's area of responsibility. When we go through the presentation, you will see high charts by department, and we'll go through what makes up all those different expenses and revenue categories. And one thing that the entire budget process that we rely on is the strategic plan and the vision, mission, and value statements. So, we have the vision, mission, and values up on the screen. The vision statement talks about providing a beautiful setting of relaxed elegance and unsurpassed value. Obviously, that needs to be in mind as we're building the budget. The mission statement also speaks to that, when it talks about maintaining prudent fiscal management. And the core, and the value statements talks about responsibility in maintaining property values in a financially stable community, and excellence, providing superb facilities, service, and activities. So, we have to balance that with the cost of doing business, as well as what the members pay at the point of sale, and what's subsidized by the dues. The other area that I mentioned was the strategic plan. The Strategic Planning Committee is actually in the process right now of updating the plan. We hope to have that wrapped up into the members before the next annual meeting. The strategic plan was done back in 2011, and it focuses on a total of nine objectives, and there's a few objectives that are specific to this budgeting process that we're keeping in mind as we build this budget. The first objective talks about the long-term financial plan to achieve the capital improvements. That has to do with the capital budget. We'll be talking about that a little bit later in the meeting. Objective four talks about maintaining the financial performance of all the departments and weighing those against the amenities that are offered. Objective six talks about the timely maintenance of the different areas. Objective seven gets into the range of amenities, and again, it's about balancing what's offered to the members and the cost of doing that. And the eighth objective talks more so, again, about capital improvements and future improvements to the property, and we'll get into that a bit later. So, we get to the bottom line. This is what I think everyone looks at. This is what was in your handout, and I think the number that most people gravitate to is, you know, the total cost of ownership at a 4.4% increase. If you take into account the renovation piece, that actually comes out to 3.9, 3.9% increase. Now, this year is a little bit different, and the footnote explains why that was in your handout, and if you can't see it on the screen. It talks about the fact that there's some changes in the generally accepted accounting principles that will be coming into play in the next couple of years. That's gonna require the leases to be moved through capital funding, so that's why you see a change here. If you look at the country club dues, at only a 1.1% increase, and then you come down here to the annual capital assessment going from 750 to 1,000. So, this is where the big increase is for the whole dues component, is in this capital assessment number. So, of that 250, there's two components to that. One is the fact that we did a full reserve study analysis. We looked at every asset, because now with the renovation, you have more assets to reserve for, more air conditioners, and more kitchen equipment, and those type of things. So, we did a full analysis to make sure that we're reserving for all the equipment that we have. In addition to that, we also have the lease components that we mentioned that moved from operating down to here. So, that 250 is made up of both of those. So, the bottom line, 4.4%, and if you look at the total, we're at 3.9. One of the things, too, while we're on this slide, we, I really don't have a specific slide about non-resident memberships, but there has been some question about that. And non-resident memberships, that includes golf members, tennis, social. Keeping in mind, tennis and golf are not memberships that we're selling. Those are just individuals that are already here. They're going off by attrition. The budget only has two golf members and seven tennis, and social, we do sell, but on a limited basis. You have to have referrals or be a past owner, so there's some restrictions there. But just for those three categories, golf, tennis, and social, we're talking about a little over 20 individuals, so there really isn't an impact to the members, per se, but there is a dues impact, because they're paying dues of about $53,000 in total. So, that comes out to about $67 per unit. So, if we were to do away with those membership categories, you know, this number here would be going up by $67. The summer membership is another category. We, when you look at their spending plus their dues, and I say spending because of the fact that they're mostly here to play golf, and the golf revenue really drops to the bottom line, that comes out to about $95 per unit. So, by having the summer members here, your dues are actually subsidized or lower by $95 per year. So, just in those non-resident membership categories, you're saving about $160 per year. So, we'll get into the different departments. Common area maintenance. And you can see the biggest components here are security and cable television. Comcast, that comes out to about $38 per unit per month, and that's something we'll be looking at, starting next year, actually. The Comcast contract runs through the end of 2020, so we, it'll take a couple of years to go through and look at other alternatives. There's five other alternative companies that are available locally at this time, and there may be more in the future, so we'll be looking at that. The security, obviously, is a big component, and that accounts for the outsourced security through Securitas. That's 24 hours at the Motley Gate, 12 hours a day on the road patrol, and from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at airports, so 13 hours there. The other categories are pretty self-explanatory, electric, repair and maintenance, landscape, payroll and related. And on the payroll and related, I'd like to explain that a little bit, too. So, that's not just the payroll dollars. That also includes the payroll taxes, workman's comp, those type of expenses, which make up about 10% of that number. Health insurance for the employees, that makes up for about 11% of that number. And then, depending on the department, often, there's uniforms, depending on the department, training, professional associations, education, those type of things. So, those are all built into that payroll and related number. And you see, it has a bigger impact in administration. That's mostly payroll and related. The insurance category here at $145,000, that's a club insurance, and that's actually down from about 20%, oh, sorry, about $20,000, about 13%. We made an adjustment with the deductibles, taking it from $2,500 deductible to $10,000, and worked closely with a member, Joe Morrissey, who was greatly helpful, actually adding some additional coverages and still saving some money. Professional services, that gets into a number of different areas, from legal fees, auditing fees, our website platform, the H2B Visa employees that we'll be bringing on next year. That all takes into account in the professional fees category. The maintenance utilities, again, pretty self-explanatory here, payroll and related. Janitorial, I think it was mentioned in the handout, is a pretty significant contract. We were able to maintain that contract flat, although we did, we do have a slight increase in additional services, such as carpet cleaning, window cleaning, those type of things, just more frequency. The fuel, propane, other contract services, repair and maintenance are all pretty well self-explanatory. Between the other contract services and other miscellaneous, there's things in there, such as the cleaning of the grease traps, outsourced IT services, the plant, interior plants we have in the clubhouse, and pest control, and those type of items. Golf revenue, we talked about in the member handout, that we had a pretty significant increase in the golf fees last year, so the carts went up a dollar and the green fee $3 last year, so there's no recommended increase on those fees. So, this is based on a projection of about, just shy of 41,000 rounds for the cart fees and green fee. And then, the merchandise. And on the merchandise component, too, that flows over to the next slide with the cost of goods. And the cost of goods, we did an article recently in either The Bridge or The Voice talking about the cost of goods that we maintain here at the club, and that it is competitive with other clubs in the area. And we'll run that again in the fall and in season, when more members are here, but we maintain right at about a 74% cost of goods, which, again, is competitive with what other clubs are offering. You can see the other categories of payroll and related, and supplies, range supplies, golf shop supplies, and those type of items. Golf course maintenance. Obviously, the biggest component here is on the payroll side. Core supplies is a hefty number, at over $300,000. About two-thirds of that is chemical fertilizer. There's some other supplies that fall into that category. Repair and maintenance is actually down about $15,000 from our past history, and we'll talk about that when we get to the capital component. Tennis pool and fitness. Again, payroll is the heaviest weight in the department. Repair and maintenance and supplies, that speaks to both tennis and fitness. Other miscellaneous gets into safety. We're actually adding a couple of additional AED units. We wanna add one more at the clubhouse. Safety and first aid typically if it's fallen under tennis pool and fitness. So, we have additional AED for the clubhouse, and also one over at golf maintenance, because that's kind of a central spot if there was an emergency. The other thing I'd like to mention while we're on tennis and fitness, and it was mentioned in the handout, is that the tennis fees, we took a look at, and those haven't gone up for about 10, 11 years. The tennis fee for the round robin for the members is $2, and this budget assumes taking it to $2.50. For a renter, the round robin fee is $5, and this budget assumes taking that to $6. Food and beverage. As Mr. Henry mentioned before, we compare a lot of our information against locally available information, such as the trends with McGlady or RSM. And as Mr. Henry said, we're actually about 30% higher per door, and we have had a lot of clubs coming through. I mean, Stonebridge's reputation is so great in the community, and we've had a lot of clubs coming through practically on a weekly basis to kind of check out what we do at the club, hours of operation, menus, venues, especially the vistro, and that's what a lot of clubs are moving towards. They want to do a renovation similar to what was done here, so that they can add kind of a casual indoor/outdoor venue. So, although we're 30% higher in spending, I could see that change in the future as other clubs come online with more so of what we're offering. The other portion with trends is we compare our cost of goods, like our food cost is budgeted at 45%. That's exactly in line with trends for bundled clubs in Southwest Florida. Beverage cost is slightly higher, a couple of points higher, primarily because of our wine cost is a bit higher, and that's mostly attributed to the size pour and the quality of house wine that we've upgraded since Ben Elwell's been outboard. So, the budget all takes those into account. The expenses on that category, payroll and related, and the payroll and related in this category, this takes into account all the base wages, so not the service charge. So, the service staff is paid a base wage. It's supplemented by the service charge. So, payroll and related here is a base wage plus the full kitchen wages. Cost of goods, obviously, the cost of doing business, like I said, on the food and beverage. Other miscellaneous gets into valet and those type of categories. Entertainment decor, definitely higher than what you see at a lot of the other bundled clubs in Southwest Florida, just because of frequency of entertainment. The budget next year assumes a similar entertainment schedule with entertainment at the vistro, a couple of days a week in peak season, a full calendar of member events, continuing entertainment in the summer months, twice a month in the summer. So, that's all taken into account there. And our, jumping back to the revenue, the revenue piece, so we're at a total of 1.7 million, almost, and that's with a very similar set of hours of operations that we have this year. The only difference that we're recommending is, in season, we were having dinner every night, and on Monday and Tuesday nights were the slowest nights of the week. On any given Monday, Tuesday, we could do 50 to 60 covers typically. So, the recommendation in this budget is to close on Monday evenings, with the exception of Wednesday's parties and the member cocktail party, of course, but then focus on Tuesdays and have it more of a promotional night, the Two for Tuesday program that we'll be bringing back. So, we anticipate we'll actually do more covers. We'll serve more members in that one night on Tuesday than we would in the past on Monday and Tuesday with the right type of promotion things. This slide here is in the handout, it was the last page, and it gets into the breakdown of the dues components as a percentage of your total cost. So, excluding the renovation fee, the per member is $7,254. So, this breaks it down by each category. So, you can see that golf, and that's net of golf course maintenance and golf operations. So, you can see that golf is a subsidy of essentially 17 cents on the dollar in your dues, in your dues component. Food and beverage, 11% plus service charge at 7%. And we had a good amount of discussion, both with management and the Finance Committee, about the service charge and reevaluating that and looking at if that is the right program. And obviously, if the service charge went away, that piece of the pie comes out, so you're saving that $540 a year. But we would have to add a little bit to this food and beverage subsidy, just to keep the service staff's wages competitive to where they are now. So, you can see a slight uptick there, if we went with a 20% fertility, but management's recommendation with the support of the Board and Finance Committee is to continue with the service charge. And interestingly enough, when I'm talking to a lot of the clubs that come here, that is a pretty hot topic. A lot of people, especially members that are coming from other clubs, are asking about minimums, because clubs are more so trying to get away from doing minimums. The negative with a minimum is you're penalizing members if they don't come in and die. The only financial benefit is what drops to the bottom line if they don't use, spend what their minimum was. That's the only financial benefit. You're forcing the members to come in, whereas the service charge, you're actually rewarding the members to come in. So, the more you come in, the more you're saving, so to speak, because you're not paying that 20% or 18% at point of sale. Tennis pool and fitness comes in, it's actually more like 3.5% of the total dues component, so about 3.5 cents on the dollar for dues subsidy. Maintenance utilities, just shy of 10. GNA at 17, and the capital reserve assessment equates to about 14% of your dues component. Now, we'll talk a little bit about the capital piece. So, we have two capital funding components, which is the master capital and then the resale capital. So, we'll talk first about the master. These are all items that are current existing assets that we're reserving for. So, this is a pretty extensive list. These are all items that are due for replacement next year. We have a full reserve analysis that we update every year. We had a professional come in to do, Isaac came in and looked at all of the assets, gave projected lifespans. And what we do then is we take, and we just don't say, okay, if it's due this year, we're replacing it. We actually look at every asset, determine whether we can get some more life out of it, or if it's due for replacement, then it makes it onto this list. You'll notice a few line items that I mentioned before about leases. So, like Real Master, Roughmar, those are leases that were previously in the operating budget, which are now being moved over to the capital. Golf cart lease, again, coming from golf operations, moving into capital. There's another component, which is different this year, which is actually leasing more of the golf course maintenance equipment. There's a good amount of equipment at golf course maintenance, about 40 pieces of equipment that has roughly a four-year lifespan, and what most, what a lot of the clubs do is they lease that equipment versus purchasing. So, we are including in this package, this budget proposal, the golf course maintenance equipment lease package. So, that's above the pieces that we're already in operating, moving over. This is going with a full lease package, four-year lease on those 40 pieces of equipment. And that's where we saw earlier some savings on the repair and maintenance, because sometimes we would extend the life as long as we could of a piece of equipment, sometimes longer than we probably should have, just because we have a great mechanic, but our repair and maintenance line item was pretty significant, so we see a little bit of the savings in that category. Another one that might be of interest to the members, which is in the reserve schedule and one that we'll be doing next summer, is the driving range. That's one that Mark is anxious to do, to get the driving range tee box to drain better, and it would actually bulkhead the front of it, so that we could get more usable space, which will allow us to have more staging areas on the driving range, so you can hit off the grass more frequently. So, bottom line for 2017, this comes out to 563,000. We're projected to end this year at 750, call it 9,000. With 1,000 per doors, we'd be collecting just shy of $800,000, less the projected expenses of 563. We'll end next year just shy of $1 million in the reserve account. Resale component is the other way of funding capital items. The resale, as everyone knows, is what's paid at closing by a new owner, and, but that was actually up for a vote a couple of years ago to give us some more flexibility. That is one, especially as we look at trends from other clubs, that we are actually the lowest, according to one of the recent surveys, on our resale account. A lot of the clubs are at around $5,000. It's pretty typical on the resale account. Ours is fixed in the declaration at 25% of dues, so it's about $1,700, $1,800. So, we're collecting significantly less in that account than what you see at other clubs, but again, that's tied to the declaration, so it would take a vote of the members. So, this list takes into account a number of different items. Most of them management recommended. The one that's not on the list, which will be very soon, is enhancements to the terrace. That's one that we've, I've been talking about for probably about a year, and we're working with Wegman Design Group right now. We actually have a meeting set up with the grounds facilities committee in mid-August, then through the finance and the Board for approval to do that project, but we're still working on the full scope of work and cost. After the, and much of that project, if not maybe all of it, most of that will probably come from the resale account, because it's new capital. It's not an existing asset that we're replacing. So, after So after we have those, that cost and scope of work, then we'll determine where that falls into this mix. The fish cooler, grill bar, wine cooler, those are smaller items and likely ones that we would do when the budget's in effect in October. And then ideally, we want to make sure we have sufficient funds to be able to accomplish the terrace enhancements prior to the coming season. So we have that in place for the season. Then the other items that remain would be as funding becomes available. So if we look at the projected year-end balance this year is just shy of $84,000. The anticipated contribution coming in from resales during the fiscal year of 2017 is just shy of $80,000. That's assuming that we have 44 closings, 44 units turnover next year. And that's typically where we are, a little over 5%. Take into account the $70,000, that would bring the end of next year's capital fund to at $92,000. Again, that doesn't take into account the terrace project. And the footnote at the bottom, the finance committee this year determined that we should have a minimum balance of $25,000. So if something came up, we have some funds, we don't want to completely drain the resale account. So there'll be more on this probably at the next board meeting. And that brings us to Q and A. Questions? Yes?
Tim, I've always questioned-
Actually, if you don't mind using the mic, then maybe I'll pick up on that.
I've always questioned that why the capital reserve is not billed quarterly the Red West it is. Now that we've gone from $750 to $1,000, why can't we just bill that quarterly and have everything quartered like the dues?
That's a good question, and it's something that the finance committee could certainly look at. The one area to look at would be cash flow, but it's not as if we'd be dipping that low into the account throughout the year. I'm not sure off the top of my head if there's something in the declaration that speaks to it specifically being annual, but that's something we could certainly look at. Questions? You're making this too easy on me. Happy hour goes till six, so if we wrap up soon, you can still make it to happy hour. Yes, sir?
Could you redo the numbers with the lease treatment and the old way rather than the new way? Okay, so I've actually been running a leasing business for the last 25 years. And talking about the new gap treatment on capital leases.
Yes.
Could you do the old way and the new way for explanation purposes, please?
We actually did that specifically by every department at the board and finance committee workshops. And we toyed with the idea of presenting it that way here, and it becomes, I wouldn't say overly confusing, but we didn't want to get into a three-hour meeting. The finance committee's workshop was probably five hours, board's three or four hours. So, and we spent that time backing in the difference on all the leases so they could see a true comparison from year to year. So there was, at the board level and finance level, a great amount of time focused on that. But to actually dissect all of that here would take a lot of time to go through each department. Yes?
I was just curious, the slide you had with food and beverage and golf, it was roughly built by 18%. When you add the service charge to the 11%, how does that stand with other bundle communities as far as comparing those two?
I forgot to repeat the question of Mr. Brown on the phone, so let me try to catch up a little bit.
Can I ask, I got to leave the last question.
Sure, the question right now was about the dues subsidy as far as golf and food and beverage compare, with golf being at 17% of the dues component, and food and beverage, when you add in the service charges, at 18%. And that's very comparable to the other clubs as we look at trends. There's a number of different factors that go into it, but it all averages out pretty close to the same. For example, you know, trends will even break it down into a per acre cost, and we don't have quite as many acres. But that can be a flip issue, because we have less acres, there's more compaction on the turf we have with different challenges to maintain that. So everything averages out surprisingly very close. The common area maintenance is probably the one that you'd see the biggest fluctuation on, depending on what that club provides. When we saw the slide about security in bundle cable television, that made up for close to two-thirds of that whole budget. And some clubs have a great, they may not even have a gate personnel, most do, but most don't have the number of hours that we have. And then the cable television, we're seeing a lot of shifts in that area. Some clubs are going away from bulk services altogether and leaving it up to the owner. And others are going the other direction now, too, where they're actually adding in internet service because of the pricing that they get, so TV and internet. Again, that's going to be a really big topic and one that we're going to focus next year, especially start to get involved in what the members are looking for, what the members would like to see as far as bulk services go. Any other questions?
Tim, what are you considering including in the terrace enhancements?
The question there was about the terrace enhancements. And the biggest portion of it is the focus of specifically outside of the dining room. So from everything you can see right here, all the way down to the automatic sliding doors, and really making it more of an extension of the dining room, having some soft seating areas, maybe a fire pit table, dressing it up a bit different to give it some character, setting up some seating areas, like some high tops and low tops, kind of in its own area in ways to differentiate that, kind of make it a little bit more cozy. So soft seating, high tops, low tops would be the big thing. And then consolidating some of the existing tables around just the exterior portion of the grill room bar. That's pretty sparse right now. Filling that in, doing some, you know, seat cushions and that type of thing to make that a bit more inviting. So we probably wouldn't lose any actual table seating, but specifically out here, make it more inviting for members to just gather socially, just like what you see outside the bistro. Yes?
One of the slides indicated that there would be $15,000 possibly devoted to tennis viewing areas. And I'm wondering which courts that's going to be involved.
So the question on that was the capital component for the tennis viewing areas, which is on the resale slide, at $15,000. That's a project that, as you know, the tennis and fitness committee's been talking about for some time. And the committee currently unanimously recommends going forward with that. It actually includes Court 1, 2, and 3. The scope of work, Court 2 obviously would probably be the most significant because there isn't a current viewing area there, so that would be adding a viewing area. And then some work on Courts 1 and 2.
Can you break down if Court 2 would be projected?
Court 3, I'm sorry.
Court 2, of the $15,000, how much is going to be?
About half, about half of Court 2. About half. The question was what the cost of Court 2 was compared to the other two, one and three. And it's roughly half that's dedicated to Court 2, just because that has more work with brick pavers and that type of thing.
That's what the projection is for Court 2?
That's what the projection is, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any others before we wrap up? Yes?
I have a question that relates to inflation and our increases. You know, CPI, which is not a direct correlation, runs about less than 1%. We're running about 3% to 4%. I just want to see how that is, as it relates to our peer group, right, our bundle group. Because everybody running about 3% or 4% increases per year over the last few years. Do you see that trend?
Yeah, one of the big numbers that feeds into it is the question Mr. Brown was about comparable clubs and total cost of ownership increasing at 3% to 4%, 4% to 5% range, and whether that's comparable with other local clubs. The biggest component, and I don't think I highlighted it, but it was in the handout, was 3% payroll merit increases. As you can see, when we go through the different departments, payroll is the biggest portion. So a 3% merit increase is budgeted in there, and that's a pretty significant portion of it. That is right in line with what other clubs are doing right now. There's a lot of surveys between the controllers group, club managers, bundle club managers, about payroll increases, comparisons by positions, departments. And we're right in line with that 3%. There certainly are some that are going a little bit higher. Pretty rare to see anything below the 3%. So that directly correlates to that typical 4% or 5% increase. And that's what I'm hearing from my peers with bundle clubs. And that's specific to bundle clubs, if not so much with traditional country clubs. We do a lot of surveys within the bundle club managers, and that's right in line. There's a couple that are going up a little bit higher, but for the most part, it's in that 4% or 5% range. Any other questions before we wrap up? Yes, one more question.
No questions, Tim. Why don't you put a guard, a handrail coming up from, to the top?
A handrail coming up from where?
Up inside of the driveway.
The question, Mr. Brown, was about adding a handrail walking up the hill to the front of the clubhouse. It actually is the first I've heard of that suggestion, but something we could discuss with Grounds Facilities. We could certainly take a look at that. We have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks.
Keep it from partying on the sidewalk.
Hopefully, I'm not sure about that. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you so much for attending. We'll have this video up online, hopefully tomorrow, we'll probably have it out with the electronic newsletter, so it'll be available online. Thank you.